2015, Happy New Year. Item number one, Sabrina, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Modri.
Here.
Item number two, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted in the entry to the council chambers. Item three, additional items. Three A, Mike Francis and Jeff Roberts Swimming Pool Report. Welcome.
I'm going to start out by having Mike just kind of go over the report a little bit, and then if I need to interject anything, I'll do so.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I sent out a copy of the report to everybody last week, so have some time to look it over. Just to briefly go over what it is, back in 2013, we had an aquatic study done by Larkin Aquatics to take a look at our pools and kind of address where they were. They came back as... Is that feedback? Sorry. It came back as that there were some, you know, we weren't meeting ADA qualifications and that we had to do the ADA updates to them and that. And since then, we've kind of had some internal talks about what we're going to do. We've had, the ADA committee has taken a look at the report, and we have gone over and made the adjustments and made the upgrades to Gilbert Pool that were chosen as the easiest to make those updates to.
Questions from the council? Councilman Blood.
So, Mike and Jeff, I know you guys have been working really hard on this, and I just want to thank you for that. So, would you say that I'd be correct if I said that, first of all, we're long past due for a plan, that this is something that really should have been tackled quite a while ago? And that, excuse me, I think I'm losing my voice, which you could be so lucky, that it would probably behoove us, since we have strategic planning this week, to maybe tackle this as part of strategic planning? I know that Jeff had talked about maybe rotating, taking pools out of service each year, making sure that we address this in the CIP budget, make sure that we're updating the pools financially, that we have money set aside for the repairs of this pool, for these pools. Because we've got to play catch-up. This is something that has kind of been dumped on this council and the council that I came upon in 2008. This really should have been addressed about 15, 20 years ago. Would that be right?
Yeah, that's probably, probably 10 to 15. But our pools are either at, or a couple of them could be past their life cycle. I'm losing my voice, too. That's why I'm not doing much talking.
The break, and that's what happens, right?
But you're exactly right. This should have been looked at in some kind of a rotation plan of, what's the next step? Are we going to pull pools out of service and put new ones back in? Are we going to an aquatic center? Are we going to go strictly just splash pads? But come Thursday, this is one of the items that I want to have on for the afternoon discussion on how we're going to move forward with this, because I would like to have some resolved by the end of five years.
So, this isn't optional. This is something that we have to discuss in strategic planning. We've got to have a plan.
We have no choice or to shut them all down, because they're getting to that condition.
So, when we talk about shutting them down, let's talk about Sorenson Pool. To bring it up to standard, $408,100, and that doesn't include the voids that you found last spring?
That was the...
Is that right?
That doesn't even include that, because we would have to remove the whole bowl and everything, I think, in order to get it, and then put a new one back in place. Now, we're talking, you know, $2 to $3 million for a new pool.
For a new pool, right? That's what the aquatic study said.
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't foresee Sorenson being opened up just for safety reasons any time.
So, to put that in perspective, how many pools do we have?
We have...
We have a total of five pools. That's including Sorenson.
And how old are each of those pools?
The oldest one, I believe, was first built in 1956. The newest one was 1976, '77, somewhere in that timeframe.
So, we're really in crisis mode on our pools?
Definitely, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for helping me put that in perspective.
Mr. Burlowitz?
Yeah, I just interject. The, really, the impetus for the aquatic study was, goes to the point that Councilmember Blood made, that nothing had been done. Nothing had been looked at. Obviously, ADA was a major concern, because we also hadn't updated our ADA plan since 1996. So, clearly, we had a lot of ADA issues. The pools are always a key area, along with your other recreational facilities. But that was the reason why we did the aquatic study, to at least give us an idea in terms of the condition of the pools. While they weren't, we didn't do the soundings at that time. But clearly, what the significant issues were, we know that under current standards, for instance, your baby pool technically is supposed to be part of your larger pool, because they don't have filtration systems. And so, that raises an issue at times in terms of the operations. But that was really just to give us baseline information as to the condition of the pools, what the cost would be to make necessary improvements, and in some cases, that may or may not actually bring us totally up to ADA standards. But again, yeah, we clearly need to move forward before we get to a point where we're having to have multiple closings of pools.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in complete concurrence with Councilwoman Blood. We have got to come up with a plan and an implementation strategy, and that includes site selection, design, the things I believe that Jeff, you were looking at in the meeting prior to this, where we didn't move forward with that item. But we've also got to at least minimally maintain these pools until such time as we do implement a plan that is better for the city, citywide. I agree with the, with the study that was done. I've talked with Scott Holtmeyer with AquaCam on multiple occasions, on the mechanical components of the pools themselves are horrendous. We have to have that plan, Mike, and that's what I really hope you can provide back to the council, so that we can move forward with this.
Sorry. The report that Mike put together basically is a maintenance schedule, just to keep them to the minimum, to keep them up and running. But eventually, that's going to run out, too.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I know we've got a lot of work to do on this, but are you predicting that the other four pools will remain open for this next season?
That's my hope. Our staff does a great job in keeping them together. Every year, we go through and fix, you know, what can be done, and that, and fix what needs to be done, to make sure that they are up and running all year, so the citizens are able to enjoy them.
On this ground radar penetrating, radars, what we...
The GPRS, I believe, Ground Penetrating Radar System.
It sounds like all the pools have an issue with some voids, but it seems like the others might just be pretty much pertaining to decks. I know one pool had mentioned two corners of the deep end.
Mm-hmm.
And again, maybe this is something we'll talk about later, but is it the plan to try during, before the season, the swimming season starts, is it the plan to address those, to break some of this up and look at it, see if it can be fixed? And then the second part is, a lot of your pictures, and I realize there's probably a pretty good expense, but it just seems like a lot of the pictures that we got in this is a lot of connections, you know, where it connects to the ground is cracking up, where two bars or two sections of a support for the water slide or the diving board is all rusted or falling apart. Are those manageable?
I'll answer that in two parts. The first question that you had asked about the decks, and that is our plan this year, is we're going to go through on, at the pools and look at them, look with the, where the radar, where the GPRS had said was the voids, and pull out a couple of sections and see, is it, is there a huge void, or is it just a small void? And then try and pour those back in. As for the corner of those pools, I'm not going to touch the tubs, because then we run into other issues. And then the second part, the pictures, that I just wanted to give you, give everybody an idea that the work that we've done during the preseason and during the season of last year, those were pictures that were taken by the Safety Department and the Safety Inspector, and those issues were addressed right after those came out.
Okay.
So, all those pictures in there, that we've had those addressed.
One thing I did notice, and I think it was in some of the city administrators' reports, I think from Mr. Woodard, it was times that it seems like maybe he went to Sorenson and stole a support bar or some bolts and nuts or whatever to go to another pool. One of my concerns is by, if we're not, if that pool is closed permanently, and I think Mr. Roberts, you had made, one time made a comment to me, it's almost like where the seam is in the pool at Sorenson, it's like the tub is going to split away from it. Would that be right?
Split or shift.
Somehow separation, a major shift. So, the void is too significant for that pool to be repaired, and like what Mr. Roberts said, for us to start over, we're talking probably several million dollars. Part of my concern is, I think it's excellent to use it for parts and stuff like that, but I don't know how much longer we should allow that pool to remain. Do we tear it down? Do we fill the tub up with sand? I don't know. But I just would hate to see some kid make a tumble, you know, in the middle of the night, horse around that pool, standing on the board or whatever. Maybe that's been removed, I don't know. But I hate to see us, one of these days, have a kid at the bottom of that pool, obviously no water's there.
Understand, and Jeff and I have discussed that, too.
Yeah. Because I think this is the first that I've heard that, that the voids under that pool are too, probably too significant to save that pool.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilman Blood.
You know, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but we need to make sure that we hear the message that Jeff keeps giving us. We have an excellent employee in Jeff Roberts, and Jeff is our expert. And Jeff is telling us that we need to plan for the future. And Jeff is the person, and now that you're not the expert, Mike, too. That's our engineer. And we need to take this seriously when we budget and plan in strategic planning. And we need to do what the councils, prior to the last few years, has not had an opportunity to do, which is to plan for it. This should have been done 10, 15 years ago, as many other things that we're dealing with right now should have been done. Because if we don't, there's not going to be pools in Bellevue. That's the bottom line. So, it's easy for us to sit on the sidelines and guess what we think needs to be done. But the one thing I want to make sure that I personally think we should be doing is making sure that we're following Jeff's lead and not micromanaging and guessing what needs to be done. So, that's, that would be my personal input, is that we're listening to what Jeff is telling us, because he's given us a lot of good information. And I've said this before at other meetings in 2014, is sometimes I think we sit up here and act like experts, when we have some really good experts working for us. And strategic planning is just two days away, and the time to act is now.
Thank you. Are there other comments from the council? Questions, discussion? Sina, thank you. Mr. Francis, Mr. Roberts? Oh, oh, online, from Arizona. Mr. Preister, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do want to mention, before I make the comment, that the Attorney General has said that it is permissible for me to also ask questions and to participate, except for voting. So, I appreciate the information. I would just like to follow up on what Councilman Cook said. I, too, see that Sorenson is in such dire shape, that no matter what we do, if we come up with the money to replace it, or whatever we do, the existing structure isn't usable or functional. And while it sits there, it's open to vandalism, and it, I mean, the theft of the copper piping, other things can happen. But particularly, kids can get in there and somebody can get hurt. It just seems we need to eliminate that structure and get it out of there to eliminate the danger. And I think Mike already commented on that, but I would just want to express that concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Preister. Are there others? Thank you, Mr. Francis, Mr. Roberts. Item 3B, City Administrator's Report. Mr. Burlowitz?
Yes, I'll obviously address any questions, or staff, well, they're here. There are a couple items in the report that I just want to emphasize. The strategic planning session's been mentioned quite a bit. We will have a formal strategic planning session on this Thursday, January 15, from 8:30 to 4:30, at the Fire Training Center. And obviously, will be council, complete management staff and support staff. That also is a public meeting, and so it is open to the public, if someone from the public chooses to sit in and attend. The other item is, if you, I'm sure most of you do read the paper or follow online, the 2015 legislative session is convened this last Wednesday. And there are a number of key issues that are on the slate to be discussed. Probably one that we'll be monitoring very closely will be, obviously, the issue of property tax. It appears to be a hot item. When you say property tax, that always raises a level of concern on the part of municipals, because that's basically a major source of lifeblood for us, from the standpoint of revenues. In the past, the legislature, when they've addressed property tax, either with budget lids or budget restrictions, or giving exemptions, we've usually taken the short end of the stick at times, and never really been made whole when we lose those property tax dollars. So, that's something that clearly, through the league municipalities, as well with our state senators that represent Bellevue, will be monitoring very closely. During the legislative session, staff does pay attention to bills that affect municipalities, obviously, utmost those that would affect the city of Bellevue. And we'll keep in communication with state senators in the league, and keep the council as thoroughly briefed as possible, especially at times when we need to have a voice in Lincoln at public hearings. The other item is, I put in, the Nebraska League of Municipalities, of which we are a member, will be holding its Midwinter Conference in Lincoln on February 23rd and 24th. That conference is specifically designed for both elected and appointed officials. It's a session that focuses with a lot of educational sessions on major topics and issues that are important to cities such as Bellevue. Obviously, you, as council members, have your plates full on an ongoing basis, but the mayor and I try to always attend those meetings, those sessions. In fact, Mayor Sanders is on the league executive board currently. We also try to have some of our administrative staff attend, because they benefit, such as the city clerk, finance director at times, city attorney, as well as other staff. And so, would definitely encourage those council members that can, if at all possible, attend at least a part of that session. Again, it's good information, the administration benefits from of it, but it also is targeted and designed for the elected officials of cities as well. One thing we will be asking that the council consider at the next meeting, is that because, unfortunately, the league always schedules a Midwinter Conference that conflicts with the time that we usually have our second meeting in February, which would be February 23rd, that you give some thought to moving that to possibly Wednesday, February 25th. Because on the 24th of February, there is an opportunity for all municipal officials to actually have lunch with the senators that represent our municipalities. It's not just really for the benefit of having lunch with them, but by then, there's usually pretty clear where the key issues are that are before the legislature that would affect cities such as Bellevue. And it gives us, as an opportunity, to have a dialogue with our senator representatives on issues that otherwise, we might not have that chance to do so. So, I did want to make sure, hopefully, you should have all received the brochure on the Midwinter Conference, information, various sessions. There is a registration deadline. I don't have that in front of me. We'll have Lisa send that out to, just to remind you. But again, it's, I think it's really important that both administration and city council, if at all possible, take part in these sessions. That's all I had. I'll answer any questions.
Are there questions? Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, Dan, and I've talked to Angela about it. Item 12L, the approval of the Bellevue Professional Firefighters Contract. It was my understanding that after we made the proposed amendment, we rescinded that. It went back to the firefighters for approval. And as I read your administrator's report on labor negotiations, in the third sentence, it says, "The BPFA's approval was also contingent upon City Administrator Burlowitz agreeing to amend the timeframe of the current fire department eligibility list." It sounded like email earlier, questioning whether that was a new amendment or not, and if you could, please explain that.
Actually, I'll speak to that. When that came back to us, we did discuss that with the union, especially from the standpoint that that would not be a provision that we would, that we would have agreed to be in the contract. It really is something that I could make, I would have to make a request to the Civil Service Commission. They would have to agree to extend the eligibility list. The work, we did have some concerns with that whole request. First of all, it would not be part of the contract. So, it was, we were not going to agree to amend the contract to put that in. Secondly, it would have to be with the concurrence of the Civil Service Commission. And probably foremost, there would be a concern that eligibility lists become exhausted, because even over years' time, we have people on that list who take positions with other cities. And if we were to agree to extend it, we would have tied our hands, i.e. the civil service, to possibly a list that would become exhausted, and we would not be able to go out and retest to come up with a new eligibility list. So, no, that is not part of any amendment. The union, I think, was initially proposing that it be. We discussed it. They realized that it would not be a part of it, and for those reasons that I've just stated, I would not be agreeable to request an extension of that list, because I think it would put us in a very vulnerable position of having quality people yet to move forward for future positions.
Thank you.
Councilman Blood?
Actually, I have questions for Chris Schuchak on his report. I had actually given the lead for B-Cycle to Steve Johnson, so I'm curious how that meeting went with Tammy and B-Cycle.
I'll have to get back with you on that.
You wrote the report.
I said they had a meeting.
You don't know how it went? And also, you're going to be giving the Old Town Vision Plan to results, the plan to the council, the strategic planning session?
I will give you an update as far as what's been done.
You're just going to hand it to us on paper?
Sorry?
Are you going to hand it to us on paper? Are you going to share it with the whole group, or...
It will be shared with the whole group.
Why is that? Is that what we had decide, talked about doing at our meeting? I'm a little confused. That's why I'm asking. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
You had asked that by, back in October, I think, when we discussed it.
Right, when we met.
For November. You had asked that I provide you with update, a draft or a outline by the strategic planning session.
I'll jump in, yeah. If you recall, there were going to be at least one or two meetings between staff and Mr. Jensen, who was maybe going to give some insight as to how the developing of the development, a vision area plan could proceed. And so, that's what Tammy and Chris have done. The intent, I think, is to have a pretty good framework as to how to move forward, and then to, you might say, put the pieces of the puzzle together. But it was felt that it would be good to include that as part of the strategic plan to get additional input, too, from the council.
Okay. Not to sound snarky, but it would have been nice for us to be able to view that prior to strategic planning. That was kind of my understanding, and maybe Councilwoman Carmichael can help me on this, is that we were going to be able to view it, so we could discuss it before, during strategic planning.
I just recall that, at that time, we indicated that we would have something for the council at the planning session.
That was my interpretation. It was by the session.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't know what the semantics of it was, but I thought it was going to be at the, at the meeting.
At the meeting? That it was going to be presented at the meeting?
I would appreciate it a little bit sooner, but...
Yeah.
I think part of the concern was...
Miscommunication.
Yeah, part of the concern initially was some of the, you might say, perception that the planning, the planning staff was actually going to do, you know, a full-blown development plan right off the shoot, and we weren't.
Yeah, I knew that.
They needed to have time to meet with Mr. Jensen, review that, to give more thought to it themselves, and then to be able to actually provide the council with a working, a framework going forward at the, at the session. So, because it was two months away, and it sounded like a lot of time, but we're talking about a fairly complicated develop, planning project that they would be taking on.
I appreciate the fact that you've been working on this, and I don't want you to think that I'm being critical in any way. It seems that it would be hard to talk about it during strategic planning if we aren't able to view it prior to strategic planning. So, if there's any way that we can view it prior to the 15th, I think it would be beneficial for us to be educated prior to that date, if you just give us an outline or some information. I mean, I'm assuming it's done.
Well, I haven't seen it yet, but...
It says, right?
Mr. Schuchak, you want to...
I'll jump right in, Chris.
I was planning on having something available for you, for you to talk about on the 15th. As far as, you know, the plan is not done, and that was never the intent for a plan to be done on the 15th.
Do you have an outline or a template?
Yeah. I would view it, Councilmember Blood, as clearly enough information to give the council an ability, especially in light of, because you know, at the strategic planning session, we set what we call key strategic initiatives. And hopefully, that'll be adequate information if the council chooses, i.e. or the group, management and council, that that clearly would be a key strategic initiative, and there'd be enough information to help form that.
Again, and I say this over and over again, I look at Old Town and how it languishes, and it continues to languish, and that is always going to be my concern. And so, if we don't continue to keep it a priority, I mean, how long has Old Town been languishing? 20 years? And I felt like we were on the cusp of finally getting something done, and I just, I just don't want to lose the momentum, and that's my biggest concern.
I have the same issues, too, Carol. I'm even more concerned with the base closing the gate with respect to the potential business coming from the base to Old Town. So, there's multiple issues that I'm involved with as far as how this plan ultimately is implemented, and I don't know what Chris's timeframe is to complete that. I would hope that it's sooner than later, because the longer we go, the more worrisome it gets for the business community and citizens of Old One.
Mr. Burlowitz?
Yeah, and the administration definitely concurs with your concerns, because it is a major concern that has been ongoing for some time. Again, I would hope that, of course, as a group that day, if it comes to strategic initiative, which I probably suspect that it will, that then that allows to also, by the end of that day, to fashion a action plan with some concrete steps that help move it forward, so that it doesn't languish and just become a continuing source of frustration and concern.
Is there an outline that Mr. Schuchak could, could give to the council prior to the 15th?
I think the intent was to have it for the meeting.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other items of discussion, questions? Sina, we'll move on to item number four, Review and Discussion Without Action of Items on the Agenda of the Regular Council Meeting this evening. Begin with item three, Approval of Minutes and Advisory Committee Report. Three A, Approval of Agenda. B, Approval of Consent Agenda. C, Approval of Minutes of the December 8, 2014 Regular and Pre-Council, City Council Meeting. If I move too fast, let me know. I'm just practicing for this evening. I hear there's a football game that we need to get to. It's what I said. Which one? Who knows what that football game is? It's championship, right? Item four, Approval of Claims. Five, Special Presentation. Five A, Parker Schnickin' and Bellevue University Representatives. Five A, Parker Schnickin' and Bellevue University Representatives, discussion on refunding the Bellevue University conduit revenue bonds. Six, liquor license. Six A, Mazona Inc., doing business as K Park Gas and Shop. B, Rose Catholic High School. Item seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading none. Eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading, ordinance number 3797. Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you, Mayor. I still have concerns about this increase in fees for the citizens of our community, both commercial and residential. As I understand it, we have at, as of today, $1,798,588 in the wastewater fund. And I question why we would implement a rate increase for our already overburdened citizens simply to build up a $300,000 cushion in a line item that already has $2 million in it. So I am going to question that tonight at the council, and I just wanted to make you aware of that.
We also have Epiphany Romus at the podium. If you want to ask her a few questions, or if you have a statement to make. Epiphany?
Yeah, anything directly related to this, I can certainly answer here. The rate increase really is more of a pass-through cost of the city of Omaha, and it also involves our MUD administrative costs to be billing our customers. And then it also allows for just us to continue to maintain our operations based on our backlog of repairs. It really doesn't give us, unfortunately, a grand cushion of things. And so I don't know what else I can prepare, but if you want me to make something specific in terms of...
No, ma'am. I am completely on board with the existing infrastructure that needs to be repaired, and I think we need to budget for that in the process of the next budget cycle.
And see how we pay for those repairs, just through the actual sewer fees themselves. So I think that may be a big cause of confusion. And it was confusing to me, too, when I first got on board. But wastewater is completely self-sustained, so everything that we do for the sewer system really comes out of the user fees. So we don't have general fund budgeted monies that would actually come from a long-term type of plan, and then we would increase this tax here, or do anything like that, or sell land, or anything that potentially is used in other, you know, sources of funding that general fund. Wastewater is completely contained in itself, so the only way to take care of those repairs and to pay the Omaha bills really is through the fee itself. That's it. We don't have any other sources. Does that help? I know it was confusing.
From the perspective of our previous conversations, I'm not in agreement that we should have to pay for Omaha's separation of their sewer. And I think that's a big bone of contention for me.
I understand.
And for the citizens that I have here, because we've got sanitary sewers and water lines in Old Town Bellevue that are decrepit and need to be replaced.
Amen.
And I don't believe MUD or the Omaha wastewater people are going to come down and replace ours when we need to have those done. We're going to have to rely on that money.
Agreed.
And at that point in time, when we get to that, I would be in favor of increasing the fees for our citizens because it's directly for our infrastructure, not the city of Omaha.
We did, Dan and Rich and Jeff and I, we all, you know, came begging Omaha, please, please. As did Papillion in Sarpy County, you know, how can you validate, you know, passing this on to us as residents, you know, by having to foot the bill for the CSO? And after talking to them, I think it became very clear that the way that it was explained to us, their infrastructure and our infrastructure is so intermingled that that EPA that put those stringent constraints on them for what they could discharge into the Missouri River, what was actually discharging was part of Bellevue sewage. So the way Omaha has basically explained it to us is that everybody reaps the benefits of cleaning up the Missouri River, and so everybody who uses that infrastructure at some level pays for the cost. And because we do utilize all of our treatment through the city of Omaha, in essence, our infrastructures are so intermingled that we have no options but to pay that bill. And, I mean, what, I asked the council, what are my options? Do we just not pay Omaha? I don't think we have that option. And I don't think Omaha, after coming to the table with them, has any, has anything to look at in terms of giving us special rates. They have already said we are actually in a special rate fashion, so we're like a wholesale bulk customer, just like Papillion, and just like Sarpy County and Gretna. But I understand, and it was a very difficult pill to swallow. But after discussing with them and understanding how our infrastructures are dependent on Omaha's treatment processes, I really feel that those wholesale rates are probably the best we're going to get. If there was some level to be able to go with these other communities to some type of a new drawing board and draft some type of an agreement, potentially, we could do that. It didn't sound to me, after talking with Omaha, that they were open to do that. But in the meantime, you know, while all of that red tape is getting cut, we're still paying the bills, and we don't get any special treatment, I guess. And I'm, we're already processing bills that are higher and higher and higher.
Well, from my perspective, if there's an increased cost to treat our sewage at the south plant, that's an acceptable reason to increase our fees. If the 88-inch interceptor that runs along and adjacent to the Papio Creek has leaks in it, that's a legitimate reason to increase our rates to fix that. It's not a legitimate reason to go up into North Omaha and do a sewer separation project for something that was built in 1900 that Omaha is going to benefit from and Bellevue's not.
I think what becomes difficult is to differentiate the scope of work from what they're doing to actually out, to affect the outcome of what the EPA is requiring them to do. For instance, EPA didn't walk in and say, "City of Omaha, you have to fix this area and this area and this area." They basically walked in and said, "You have to fix the discharge limitations that are coming out of the Missouri River." And Omaha, looking at their sewer system, said, "Okay, well, we actually, to do that, have to separate it and treat it, et cetera." So that's their solution to meeting that need. And the fact that our sewer, you know, is, our sewers are so combined with theirs, and our sewage itself is being treated with theirs, and so when there's an overflow, it's our sewers that, it's our sewage that's actually overflowing. And so that's how it was explained to us, and I think pretty clearly. But if it would behoove us to actually ask Omaha or their mayor for a fine, hard-line statement, that's something we can pursue as well.
I think it's above your pay grade, to be quite honest with you. I think it's something that the administration and the council and the mayor need to address because it's just not fair.
Yes, Steve, and Epiphany did mention, we did have a conference call with Marty Great, who's like their wastewater superintendent, and who explained how the system works. And Epiphany's done a very good job of explaining how, they view it as an integrated system. Papillion's involved in it, Bellevue, I think La Vista, I think La Vista is tied on to it as well. A couple points, probably just to keep things somewhat separated. The 1.7 million, Epiphany mentioned that we do operate just from user fees, and that's, the wastewater plant is no different than if you had water or electric utilities. It's called, what's called an enterprise fund, and it's basically a governmental business. And so you're expected to set rates that not only cover operating costs, but also that allows you to at least build up and maintain a reasonable, what I call a cash reserve, for several reasons. Capital planning. We do have a five-year capital plan. Those plans, sometimes, they change a lot. Sometimes problems come up that we didn't know we had. But even if they don't, we need to be in a position when we either fund those out of the cash reserve, but if we're going to do any bonding, we also need to have a cash reserve because to sell revenue bonds, that's what they're called, revenue bonds, people, the people who buy those bonds and market them, they want to see that you have a reserve to be able to make sure you can make those bond payments. And so, and also, we need to have adequate reserves to address emergency repairs and planned repairs that we have. For a city our size, with the size of our system, 1.7 million is pretty reasonable. I've seen utilities, I've been in the utility business, both electric, water and wastewater. Water and wastewater have a little more difficult, it's more difficult to generate cash reserves because the rates are different. But that's why we have that 1.7. And so it's kind of really a separate item from what the CSO rates that we pay, city of Omaha. When we met with the city of Omaha, they did explain that Bellevue ratepayers who are not being charged the same amount that Omaha residents are.
Correct, it's about a 30% savings.
Yeah, so we get about 50% break because they know that we aren't benefiting from some of the things that you're referring to. The other unfortunate situation is Bellevue, several years ago, was faced with a huge decision to make, which was to either spend, I think, 35 million, something like that, to go in and renovate the existing wastewater treatment plant to meet new EPA regs, or not. And I think the decision was at that point, that's a lot of money, you know, in the long run, they, it was felt, like I said, that was before any of us were involved, that we couldn't afford it. And so it was, the option was then to do away with the plant, tie onto the city of Omaha, and other than maybe them agreeing to some, for part of what they told us was that because we're a bulk customer, they treat all their bulk customers the same, and they weren't willing, didn't feel they could cut us a deal. They also said that because the system, at some point in time, early on, was built with federal dollars, that the federal dollars had a specific provision in it that they had to charge fair and consistent rates. They couldn't give any price breaks, per se, and that's the reason why. They give us a break as a bulk customer, they don't charge us the same as our current customers do because we don't get the full benefit of what they're going to do. And so that's part of the whole rate process on that. Fortunately, we don't, we can't more or less tell, we can't tell the city of Omaha, "Sorry, we don't want your service anymore because we don't have a wastewater treatment plant to hook back onto to meet our needs." So it's a lot of moving parts.
Mr. Richards?
Richards?
Rich Severson. Mr. Severson, would you like to say a few words?
I think they've done a good job articulating the issues. I understand the issue with Omaha also, just from the finance standpoint. Yes, we have nearly $2 million sitting there. However, over the last year or so, we've used, we did have 3.2 million. We've used some of those funds instead of going out and bonding and starting to stack up debt for somebody else to pay. We've used those funds. But now, that 2 million seems to be a good number for a reserve, after speaking to Jeff Roberts and Epiphany, for some of the potential repairs that we have coming down the road. So I like the idea of keeping it about where it is for emergency repairs and not having to go out and bond. And that is also an issue, going out to bond. Not only do the bondholders look at the reserves you have, but they also look at, is it self-sustaining? And that's where you need to match the revenues with the expenses year by year. They might see that you've got a reserve, that might be okay, but that when they're buying a 20-year bond, they want to see that you're putting forth the effort to make sure that it sustains itself each year. And that's one of the reasons why we probably need this increase in revenue, is so that, so that the proprietary fund of wastewater can show, however small, a slight profit each year, or at least over several years, show that it's breaking even. And over the last couple of years, we've made a little money in that fund, put it away, and then we've also drawn down from those reserves, so...
Mr. Cook?
Rich and Epiphany, what, well, probably Epiphany, what, for an average customer, say a family, you know, of four, mom and dad and two kids, we're talking, you use CCFs and cubic feet and all this stuff, what, give me like an average, a family of four...
In a dollars and cents perspective, and I think this is piggybacking a little bit off of what Steve Carmichael's point was, you know, how can we validate this with already, you know, our stress residents, our stress tax base and these increases, and what does this mean? What we also did was perform an affordability type of index to make sure that what we are doing is within the median household income range for our residents to be able to afford. And the last thing that I would like, you know, to come up here and ask council is, me being a resident myself, is to pressure something that isn't affordable for our residents. So we are actually below that affordability, you know, matrix that's out there by the EPA. And because of this Clean Water Act and all of the costs associated with that coming forward, they did do a very comprehensive-type template that we can use to make sure that what we're doing is affordable. That said, Mr. Cook, it really equates to about a $2, and I think I have the change here, you know, $2.17 or something-ish, change to a regular household, so...
What is a regular household?
That's six CCFs.
Six?
Six CCFs.
Six CCFs.
So if you're comfortable, if you look at your MUD bill, you're probably within a $29 to $35 when we talk about the mass majority of our residential types in Bellevue, your current sewer fees. So it's just about a couple of dollars of a change from that.
So you're looking probably $3, $2.50 to $3 a month increase, a regular family might see per month?
Little less than that.
Little less?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, a little less.
I was just trying to put it at, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, in a big global perspective.
I wrote it down. I heard $35, so I was trying to go to that end. I agree with a little, I agree with what Steve's saying, and I'm not sure we have any legal recourse here, but, you know, those homes were built many, many years ago without the separation, and it's not an issue in Bellevue. They're just treating our sewer. They probably have a main line that runs down with the Papio Creek. We got many lines probably happening into it. They're just, they're just, it's a treatment issue for us. But when we have a failure, or we have an infrastructure problem, you know, they're not going to step up and say, "Well, out of this fund, we'll take care of that." And I understand why, but they truly are fixing their problem. I know you were talking about what comes out into the river. Again, it's, tell us what it is to treat per CC across the board for, not, I'm not asking that, but across the board through Omaha and Douglas County and Sarpy County, and we all should be paying that rate. It's very hard for me to sit here and think that the streets in older parts of Omaha are being tore up and ripped up and replacements made, which we are sort of footing some of that bill.
And they didn't disagree that we did at some level, that wholesale rate are contributing to the funding of the overall project. You know, Omaha did absolutely agree with that.
Right, and I think you said we're getting a reduced rate, which is good. But, you know, we've seen a lot of utilities, a lot of people have increased over the last couple of years, and so, you know, $25 here, $50 here, $100 here, it does add up for each household. I had one more thing I wanted to ask, and I lost it. If I think about it, I'll ask.
While you're thinking about that, I do want to add, this isn't a new fight. Back, Mayor Suttle tried to take this fight to Washington DC because this is a mandate, an EPA mandate, that is unfunded. And so we've taken that to DC, and we've argued that point through MAPPA, through the cities, and it's a mandate, period. Now we figure out how we fund that. Mr. Sullivan?
Why don't you get Don first?
Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask Mr. Severson, regarding the amount we have currently, the 2 million that you referred to, is that also able to be used in addition to reserve for bonding or not bonding? Isn't that also able to be used for the infrastructure that we have just had approved by the voters of up to, I believe, 3/4 of the million dollars per year?
The council could decide to use those funds for the wastewater infrastructure, yes. We talked about several options of the funding of that, of which wastewater... We, we talked about several options of the funding of, of, of that, of which wastewater was one of them.
Right, I, I just wanted to make the point that it's not just money sitting there, and it does have a purpose, which I'm glad you pointed out. The other thing that I would like to ask, and this would be of Epiphany, the area between roughly 25th Street, or really even east of 25th, and up to Sarpy Ave, that whole area from Chandler Road north, all drains down into, and is Bellevue runoff, and all of that water is draining into Omaha's sewers. So they are doing repair work, at least in that area, for Bellevue, that is a part of this combined sewer. So it isn't so much we're subsidizing Omaha, we are a part of the problem.
That's a fantastic point.
Accurate, Epiphany?
Yeah, absolutely, that's a great point, Don. We are working on a project with Omaha that is part of their CSO project, they're actually looking at, we're looking at eliminating one of our lift stations so that we can have a more fluid transfer of sewage, basically, from our system into their system, and eliminate some of the overflows in that area. It's a very specific project that, that Don's referring to, but it does point out how integrated our infrastructures really are, and we're, we're working with Omaha on that right now, too.
Right, and I appreciate that you pointed out that integrated aspect of all of these sewers. I, I would like to make one comment on Councilman, Councilman Cook's question about the average bill. Mr. Severson has a copy of my sewer bill, and he also has one of a friend who's just on the other side of Harrison Street. Now I recognize, we're each single people and we're pretty conservative, but our, my sewer bill, my personal City of Bellevue sewer bill, is currently $8.56. The same usage, two minimum uses of water, which is roughly, I believe, 750 gallons each. That same usage for sewer fee in Omaha is $26.13. I would point out, that's a 306% higher rate in Omaha than we pay in Bellevue. So we need to be realistic, we're not subsidizing the sewer rate in Omaha and the combined sewer separation, we are merely paying our fair share. And for me, 35 cents a day is what I pay, and to have all of my waste treated and put back into the river in a sanitary, as clean as we can way, as mandated by the Clean Water Act, is pretty cheap and pretty reasonable. I, I see that as we have to do this, we're getting a pretty good deal. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
I just wanted to say, I haven't looked specifically at the agreement that much, but I think when we entered into hooking on to Omaha's system, it was, if you aren't going to pay the dues, don't join the club. In the sense that they're saying, you know what, we've got bad tennis courts up on the north end, and I know you're just a golfer on the south end, but we're going to replace those tennis courts, and if you're going to be part of the club, you're going to contribute to the cost of doing some of those tennis courts. And that's where I think that that has come out. I think from the standpoint of, should we be looking at this, how should, we should be doing this, this is probably a great subject for United Cities of Sarpy, or whatever they call themselves, in conjunction with Bellevue, and perhaps the county, because they're not going to do anything for the City of Bellevue that they aren't going to do for Papillion and La Vista and across the board, they're going to do it for all of them. You're going to share resources in the sense that if you want to have one attorney look at this and try to research it, and secondly, you're going to have more firepower with a bigger group of people.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Pat, I, I agree. What I was thinking of, Rich, you had mentioned that we had 3.2 million, and we're down to 1.7, 1.8 million. Wasn't one project last year, sort of that consumed most of that money, wasn't there a major project?
Yeah, there was about 800,000.
Fontanelle Hills.
Dollars, Fontanelle Hills Lift Station.
That's a pretty, I would say, average price tag for a decent size of a project.
Seven hundred thousand, wasn't it?
It was 800, right around 800.
And the only reason I bring that up is, you get, you know, a couple of those, and I don't know how, you know, you know, I mean, we're going through a lot of money.
Yeah, one emergency project, and you're in the million dollar range.
It's just frustrating that we just keep on seeing where everything's going up, and I know that's the cost of doing business, and I agree with what Pat's saying, you know, we got to fix this problem, and we're all in the game together, but it's just difficult to keep on going to people and saying, guess what, you know, you know, the utilities do it, I'm sure everybody in their daily life of going to the grocery store, we've been taking a beating, I think, so, thank you.
Prior to Epiphany here, talking to the prior superintendent, we've asked a couple of times to go back to Omaha and ask him for splitting the rates, you know, give us a government reseller rate or something that would, that would be separate from the others, and we just don't have the leverage to get them to say yes to lower rates. So if anyone has any ideas, that would, that would be the preferred method to make ends meet in the wastewater department, but we, we haven't had much luck. And then I was asked just to remind the people with long memories, that wastewater funds are being used for wastewater purposes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring one thing up, tonight you'll also be voting on a professional services agreement with TD Squared, and that's to look at some of our sewer issues we have in Old Town. There's a potential emergency situation that we could have down there in the near future, that if we don't take care of, could be anywhere from 2 to 2.5 million dollars. That's going to deplete that fund instantly.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Thank you, Mr. Severson. Ms. Ramis. Item 8B, ordinance number 3798. Resoni lots 1 and 2, Limestone Creek. HC, ordinance number 3799, rezoning lots 1, 1 addition to Terrace Heights replat. Takes us to number 9, ordinance for induction, first reading, none. 10, public hearing on matters other than ordinance, none. 11, resolutions, none. 12, current business. 12A, approval of requests for release funds and certification for U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. B, approval of the request to seek proposals of new playground equipment in Swanson Park. C, approval of requests to seek proposals for new shelters in Hayworth Park. Mr. Mojri.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This item, about $73,000, is indicated that it is not in the budget. Understand that, about 75,000, or I mean, 75% to be funded by FEMA, and another 12.5% by NEMA, but it's on the consent agenda, and it's a non-budgeted item, I just...
We'll have Mr. Roberts answer that, Mr. Roberts, oh, I believe.
Oh, I was just explaining, $73,000 is the residual of a large project we had with FEMA that was 255,000, and so after they started doing their auditing, they went ahead and approved two shelters that we had tore down for structural reasons to be rebuilt, but the reason it's in consent is just because we're going out for bid, we're not signing any contracts or anything.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. Compared along with that, what is the status of getting our money from FEMA, because, I mean, we're going to spend $70,000 on it, and it's still going to come out of our pocket until we get it back from FEMA, and we haven't got the rest of it back.
It's NEMA, and Mr. Berlitz would take that.
Yeah, and staff, jump in wherever you want to. We're still waiting for, and what Jeff is referring to is, we're waiting, still waiting for reimbursement on what would be referred to as the large projects, smaller ones are the ones that they go ahead and you get reimbursed, and that's probably the bulk of the dollars we've received. We're trying to continue to work with NEMA, and I think you've read articles in the paper where they discuss their process and how they're really working hard to get those payments to us and get the questions answered, and of course, as we've discussed before, we've been before the legislature, we thought we provided all the answers to all the questions, and, but continue to work with them, and so we're still keeping it in front of them, and of course, we've had, you know, input from our senators. So, Jeff, any?
Over the last couple of weeks, we've been getting correspondence from NEMA, and they've been approving what we've spent and done, and we've had, just had to concur with them, which we have, and so that ball is moving, we should start getting some money coming in, hopefully shortly.
Sure.
I don't know what shortly is, it could be 60 days, 30 days, but they are starting to come back that, yes, you've done what you're supposed to, we're going to start reimbursing now.
And probably the biggest thing is, even once it gets out of the hands of NEMA, then it goes to FEMA, and sometimes that gets hung up because they look at it and they come back with some questions, even to NEMA, back to us, so hopefully, any and all questions by now, because we've talked in several years, what, since 2011, have been addressed, but it still goes up the food chain to the feds, federal government. Hopefully, they'll turn around and be fairly expedient in getting the dollars back to us, but it's, so hopefully the check's in the mail.
Mr. Severson's worked really hard with NEMA, those phone calls are back and forth, and also with Jeff Roberts' office, and Karen Ida Miller, so.
Do you understand directly to say that the information hasn't even gone from NEMA to FEMA yet?
I think the information is finally going from NEMA. NEMA is kind of like the chlorine house, they don't forward until they have all their questions answered. Sometimes they do communicate with FEMA, to make sure that questions that may be at the federal level are also getting answered, but it's still, yeah, NEMA's the middleman on it, it goes to FEMA. I don't know on some of the projects we have, but sometimes it gets to them, and then they do a second look at it and may come up with some issue, but, Jeff?
If it's a small project, they've already been submitting, I think we've been paid back all our small ones.
How fast?
But on a large project, for whatever reason, NEMA won't submit to FEMA until all of those are completed.
To most of your questions.
I wish I could give you a better answer, Councilmember Carmichael.
And it's not like no one's fought for those dollars, I know the whole world, Harold wrote a great article, our leader has been on that, and...
I, I will say, the frustrating thing is, and Steve works for Council Plus in the state of Iowa, for some reason, they've been much more fortunate to be reimbursed either completely or much more expediently than we have on this side of the river. I'm not sure whether, I don't want to point fingers at the state agency, because each state's different, but it is frustrating when you read that pretty much all the federal, state and federal dollars have been paid out on the Iowa side, and we're still waiting and waiting and waiting, and, but I'm sure you, at this level, we're doing anything and everything we can. You know, I probably, hopefully I didn't irritate NEMA too much when I went down to a public hearing, and, and was very candid in our frustration, and of course, that's, I think, when you started hearing more from NEMA, especially Mr., when their Assistant Director Tuma started talking a lot more about what they're doing before that, we weren't even getting that information. So again, we're doing everything we can, and we're going to keep pushing, because again, yeah, we're, I mean, we're, we're upfronting a lot of money that, that puts a bind, puts us in somewhat of a crunch, I mean, those are dollars that do affect our cash, and so, but we're making an effort.
Are there any other questions on item 12C? Move on to item 12D, approval of the lease option for the Omaha Cellular Telephone Company, Verizon, to install dark fiber in the leased area of the City Right-of-Way Cellular Tower. 12E, approval of the lease option for the Cellu-, Omaha Cellular Telephone Company, Verizon, to install dark fiber, Right-of-Way Cell Tower JFK. 12F, approval and authorization for the mayor to sign the professional service agreement. And E, verify addendum with the VERO for design for native grass vegetation restoration in the median between Fork Creek and Chandler Road, for the amount not to exceed 3,900. 12G, approval and of authorization for the mayor to sign the agreement with E-Verify Denim between HGM Associates, Inc. and the City of Bellevue of surveying services in American Heroes Park, for an amount not to exceed 4,500. H, approval of authorization for the mayor to sign a design study and professional service agreements, and E-Verify Denim with Thompson, Dresden, and Droner, Droner, Inc., TD Square, for the reverse force main and lift station network at American Heroes Park, in the amount of 18,000. I, approval of the commercial listing contract with Russ, with Hike Real Estate PC, Dave Dunn, Rilliter, E-Verify Denim for the sale of 62 acres at the Bellevue Sports Complex. J, approval of the First Amendment to the contract with Little Sarpy LLC to increase the annual rent to 2,500 for the police gun range. Mr. Mojri.
Yes, I was just wondering, what, what was the lease before?
It was 2,000.
Okay, thank you.
12K, approval of the memorandum of understanding between the performance of Chrysler Jeep, Dodge, and Ram of Bellevue, and the City of Bellevue, Bellevue Police Department, to provide the use of a vehicle to the Bellevue Police Community Service Unit for $1 per month, be used by the community service coordinator. 12L, approval of ratification of the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. M, discussion on the pre-council meeting changes. See no other discussion or questions? Takes us back to the original pre-council meeting agenda. Item number five, executive session. I need a motion. Councilwoman Blood.
For the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of an individual, I move to go into executive session to discuss... I just lost what we're discussing, I just closed it. Thank you. I literally lost it on my screen. Discussion of the City and IAFF Local 4906 Collective Bargaining Agreement, negotiations with World Baseball Village, Discussion on Possible Economic Development Project, Project Torch and Project Evolution, Briefing on Personnel Matters.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. It is limited to a stated by Councilwoman Blood. January 12, 2015, our first council meeting of the year, Happy New Year. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If I can have Scout, Mr. Rice, join me from troop number 474, to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, and then if you would please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Justin Anthony, Bethel Christian Ministries, 3702, Giles Road.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we pray together? Father in heaven, we come to you tonight, and we're asking for your guidance, your wisdom, your mercy, your grace. We need you today, we need you tomorrow, we need you in every day of this year. I pray, Father, that this council would find your wisdom, strength, integrity, to be in every decision they make, and may this city prosper, and we pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Justin. Second item, Sabrina, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Mr. Mojri?
Here.
Mrs. Blood?
Present.
I might add, while Mr. Preister's not present, he is on Skype this evening. Item number two, 2A, Open Meetings Act is posted in the entry to the council chambers. Item three, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda, Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mojri. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 3B, approval of consent agenda, Council- Three B, approval of consent agenda, Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item three C then is under consent, and so is item number four. Item five, special presentation. Five A, Parker, Schenkin, and Bellevue University Representatives Discussion on Refunding of the Bellevue University Conduit Revenue Bonds. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Sanders. Members of the council, my name is Parker Schenkin. I'm with Baird Home in Omaha. And Mr. Sullivan assures me that as long as I have, I'm done by about the middle of the second quarter, you guys will all be okay with this. So, um, we're here today on behalf of Bellevue University and to just talk a little bit and answer any questions about the proposed refinancing of the conduit revenue bonds that have been issued for, for the benefit of the university in the past. We're not here to look for action. It's an informative presentation and to take any questions that the council might have. Um, I know some of you have been through this before, and so if this is repeat background, forgive me. But the question that often comes up is why is the city involved in this kind of financing at all? The basic reason is, as you know, cities have authority under federal tax law to issue bonds for their public projects that bear interests that is exempt from federal income tax. That reduces your borrowing costs as you've done time to time for city streets or water projects and similar things. Congress and state law extend that same benefit to certain private type projects, one of which is a five oh one C three financing. Under federal tax law, it's called a qualified five oh one C three financing. It allows the city to serve as what's called a conduit issuer, issue the bonds, immediately loan the proceeds over to a qualified five oh one C three entity such as Bellevue University. You all have been through this before and have been helpful enough to assist the university on four occasions in the past. There was the initial financing in two thousand and five, which was fifteen million dollars worth of revenue bonds that, that financed the initial administrative building on the old redeveloped Kmart site. There was a seventeen and a half million dollar issue done in early two thousand and ten to finance the new five-story portion of administration for the university. Subsequently, there was a refunding piece that refinanced that two thousand and five bond issue, what was left of it at the time, about seven million dollars, also in two thousand and ten. And today, we're here to talk about refinancing, the only piece that's really left out as of this day, which is approximately eight million dollars of the, the financing for the new piece. And so the rates have dropped to the place where it works economically. Uh, the bonds are callable, and so we're beginning the process of, of going forward with this refinancing. You know, the benefits for the university are, are lower interest rates, obviously. The debt service reserve that's currently required with their bonds is going to be waived by the new bondholder, who's a bank that has agreed to buy these bonds. And, um, you know, favorable covenants and the ability to repay this debt. So it really is something that the city can do to once again assist a, a great nonprofit corporate citizen. And, um, you know, with that kind of going forward, what we would propose in the next meeting or two, depending on when we can get things squared away and, and, and working with Mr. Sullivan, is we'll have an ordinance that generally authorizes these bonds. Uh, it will respect the fact that the statutes and the documentation will say that the city doesn't have any liability to pay these bonds. It just serves as a conduit. The documents will reflect that the university is going to pay all the expenses associated with the issuance of the bonds, my fees and Mr. Sullivan's fees and others, any things that, that accompanies this process. And then it'll really follow the same kind of model that we've done with the city in the past. And, um, the only closing remark is just gratitude on behalf of the university. This process over the last now close to ten years has saved the university a significant amount of interest cost, and that allows them to carry out their educational mission in a way more efficient manner. So it's not an insignificant thing that, that the city's done. So with that, I'd open it for any question. Oh, let me say, I've got Mr. Jerry Blazing, Debbie K. Ward from the university here, if you have any questions about the projects or the university. And my colleague Laura Feldman also from Baird Home is with us, so.
Any questions from the council? I see none.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Item number six, liquor license. Six A, Maziona, Inc., Doing Businesses Cape Heart Gas and Shop, application for Class D liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits off sale only at one two seven zero one South Twenty-Eighth Avenue in Bellevue. And for Mahmoud El...
Mahmoud.
Mahmoud El Hadawi?
Yes.
As manager. Welcome.
Yes. I'm John Whelan. I'm with Smiths, Gardner, Slosky. Uh, Mr. Handawi is, uh, ready to set up the old Eddie's location and operate the old abandoned location as soon as possible. The application's been approved. Uh, he is, like I said, he's a sole owner. He'll be the liquor manager, and if you have any questions, uh, we'll gratefully take him.
I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook.
I just got one question. Any changes? Going to make any changes? I, I live fairly close to that area, and I'm glad to see that this vacant building is now going to be put back into service.
Yes, sir. I will do my best to represent a good business in the area. Me and my family, I like Bellevue, too. I lived in Bellevue for a while, and I like the area, too. I've been looking, that's how I found the business. I've been looking for a house to live, me and my wife and my two children. And I really like Bellevue, and I will renew the place and make it always clean and light up and, and represent a good service for the community and the neighborhood and help all the neighborhood.
Well, thank you for doing business in Bellevue, and if we're ready to, I'll make a motion unless...
Sure. Councilwoman Blood.
I actually have a question. Um, are you going to bring the car wash back up to speed?
Yes, well, that's...
That'll make the neighborhood very happy.
Competition, close competition.
I, I didn't want to take away your opportunity, though, to make the motion, so I'll let you do that.
Are we done?
Competition always bring a good service for everybody.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to make a motion for approval for the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for the Mazona, Inc., Doing Businesses Mazuna?
His mother's name.
Mazy.
Came up me anyway.
Oh, okay. Uh, Doing Businesses has Cape Heart Gas and Shop, application for a Class D liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits off sale only at one twenty-seven zero one South Twenty-Eighth Avenue, Bellevue, Nebraska. And for Mahmoud?
Mahmoud Hindawi.
Hindawi?
Yes.
As manager.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please, Mr. Modri.
Yeah, I just wanted to state again that I'll be abstaining from voting for religious and personal reasons.
Please vote.
Four yes votes, one abstention.
So it passes for the recommendation.
Thank you. May we be excused?
Yes, please. There's a game to watch, I hear.
Yeah, I'm getting gear.
Thank you. Item six B, Gross Catholic High School, application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine during a fundraiser on February twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, from six PM to eleven fifty-nine PM at seven seven zero zero South Forty-third Street in Bellevue.
Thank you. I'm Tim Yoc, uh, representing Gross Catholic High School for this, uh, special liquor license for, uh, event on February twenty-first. Um, the, uh, the fundraising event, uh, is one that helps fund, um, three different extracurricular activities in our school. It's a fundraiser that, uh, probably serves about four to five hundred people, um, that evening in our community, alumni, parents, uh, many constituents from our, from our, from our school. And, um, we're looking for, uh, again, uh, that special liquor license for, for that, for that particular evening.
Thank you. I'm now open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to recommend, uh, approval to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for this special designated liquor license to sell beer during a fundraiser on February twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, from six PM to eleven fifty-nine at seventy-seven zero zero South Forty-third Street in Bellevue, Gross Catholic High School.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
Four yes votes, one abstention. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening. Item number seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading, none. Ordinance number eight, ordinance number, ordinance for public hearing, second reading, ordinance number three seven nine seven. Sabrina, would you like to read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven nine seven. An ordinance to amend section thirty dash one thirty-seven of the Bellevue Municipal Code establishing minimum monthly sewer charges for residential and commercial users in the City of Bellevue to repeal section thirty dash one thirty-seven of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, did you want to present?
Yeah, I want, uh, Ms. Ramos to just give a little, uh, brief synopsis of what the reasoning is of this.
Epiphany Ramos, wastewater operations manager, City of Bellevue. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to discuss the sewer infrastructure funding needs here today. Um, I'm here to answer your questions regarding the proposed sewer rate increase and wanted to begin with explaining, um, what the increase in costs cover. Um, they do cover the repair, the improvements, the administration and processing costs of all of our wastewater for the City of Bellevue. Annually, we do see increases in everything from the administrative processing costs to material and fuel costs and equipment replacement, of course, needs that need to be met. Do you have any questions?
None from the council? I'll go ahead and open up for public hearing on this item. Anyone like to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Ramos. The third and final reading will be on Monday, January the twenty-sixth. Eight B, ordinance number three seven nine eight. Sabrina, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven nine eight. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number Three Six One Nine by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Thirty-Sixth Street and Mitchell Road, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing.
Evening. Jason Thielin, E&amp;A Consulting Group, on behalf of the applicant, Limestone Creek Land Co. LLC, here asking for approval of our small subdivision and a change of zone from Ag to RA to allow us to subdivide the property into two lots for the purpose of, of selling them for residential use. Uh, we have roughly thirty acres. Uh, one lot will be seventeen point seven about, and the second, uh, lot will be roughly ten. We're then also dedicating additional right-of-way along Thirty-Sixth Street for the eventual improvement, um, of that street at that time when that is necessary. Uh, we were on a conditional approval at Planning Commission last month. We've met those approvals, and we were, uh, given unanimous approval, uh, at Planning Commission. We're conformist with our comp plan, and I would entertain any questions you might have regarding our request.
Are there any questions from the council? See none. I have the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Third and final reading on this item will also be on Monday, January the twenty-sixth. Item eight C, ordinance number three seven nine nine. Sabrina, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven nine nine. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number Three Six One Nine by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Betts Road and Lloyd Street, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Come back.
Jason Thielin, on behalf of the applicant, be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Mr. Cook.
Chris, I just got a quick question for you. Um, from my understanding, this is just going to be a fairly small parking lot?
Yes, that's the, um, information we received from Dr. Stacy. Um, he just needs more parking for his dental practice. It will, it's not planned to, to cover the entire lot, it's just...
Are we talking maybe five to ten parking spots?
I think he said eight.
Eight?
It is just planned for a smaller lot, yes.
And just real quick, we got an email where someone was against it. Uh, they feel that it would destroy the neighborhood. They're assuming it will be parking for the university, and that would be incorrect.
That is an incorrect assumption. Uh, Dr. Stacy's going to buy it from the, the current owner if this goes through.
So even though there's a big green space there, we'll probably have about eight parking spots?
Yes.
On only part of it closest to the building?
Closest to his office, yes.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? I'll open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. The third and final reading will also be on Monday, January the twenty-sixth. Item nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading, none. Ten, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, none. Eleven, resolution, none. Twelve, current business. I'm just a little too fast. Twelve A is under consent, B, C, D, and E is under consent. Twelve F, approval of and authorization for the mayor to sign the professional service agreement and E verified addendum with verro for the design for native grass vegetation restoration in the median between Fork Creek Road and Chandler Road for the amount not to exceed three thousand nine hundred dollars. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve or approval of the authorization for the mayor to sign the professional services agreement and E verified addendum with verro for the design for native grass vegetation restoration in the median between Fork Creek Road and Chandler Road for an amount not to exceed three thousand nine hundred.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve G, approval and authorization for the mayor to sign the agreement and E verified addendum between HGM Associates, Inc. and the City of Bellevue for surveying services in American Heroes Park for the amount not to exceed four thousand five hundred. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the approval and authorization for you to sign the agreement and E verified addendum between HGM Associates Incorporated and the City of Bellevue of surveying services in American Heroes Park for an amount not to exceed four thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve H, approval and, of and authorization for the mayor to sign a design study and professional services agreement and E verified addendum with Thompson, Dresden, and Droner, Inc., TD two for the reverse force main and lift station network at American Heroes Park in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of and authorization for you to sign the design study and professional services agreement and E verified addendum with Thompson, Dresden, and Droner Incorporated for TD squared for the reverse force main and lift station network at American Heroes Park in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote. You have it all, Sabrina? Someone?
I need a vote from Mr. Carmichael.
Sorry.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve I, approval of the commercial listing contract with Hike Real Estate PC, Dave Dunn Realtor, and E verified addendum for the sale of a sixty-two acre at the Bellevue Sports Complex. Councilwoman, well, Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to, for approval of the commercial listing contract with Hike Real Estate PC, Dave Dunn, the Realtor, and E verified addendum for the sale of sixty-two acres at the Bellevue Sports Complex.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. And, Mr. Sullivan.
Just want to mention, I do some minimal legal work for Hike Real Estate, but this contract was, uh, been used several times when we had another attorney approve it because of the conflict.
Thank you. Any other discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve J, approval of the First Amendment to the contract with Little Sarpy, Little Sarpy LLC to increase the annual rent of twenty-five hundred for the police gun range. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the First Amendment to the contract with Little Sarpy LLC to increase the annual rent to twenty-five hundred dollars for the police gun range.
Second. Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Twelve K, approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Performance Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram of Bellevue and the City of Bellevue Bellevue Police Department to provide the use of the vehicle to Bellevue Police Community Service Unit for one dollar per month to be used by the community service coordinator. Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Performance Chrysler Jeep Dodge and Ram of Bellevue and the City of Bellevue, Bellevue Police Department, purchase the use of a vehicle to the Bellevue Police Community Services Unit for one dollar per month used by the community services coordinator.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve L, approval and ratification of the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association, BPFA, collective bargaining agreement. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the approval and ratification of the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association, also known as the BPFA, collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Discussion, Mr. Cook.
I mean, Angela, I don't know if Angela's still here. No. Was that where we included a couple of words about who could take the test, and now we're removing those?
Correct. This, this...
This is the agreement as was originally presented to the council as a tentative agreement.
And what we put in there was that all city employees would be able to take the full-time firefighter's test?
That was correct.
And that was voted down by the part-time firefighters?
That's correct.
And we're going, so this vote is to remove that?
You're actually, what you're acting on was the original agreement that did not have any language to that effect in it.
I know one of the concerns was who can take the test. So if we, the next time we post this test, is that it opened up to the public with preference given to part-time firefighters.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number thirteen of number twelve M, discussion on pre-council meeting changes. Councilwoman Blood?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make this brief because apparently there's a football game somebody wants to go see, so. I mean, this is just for discussion anyway. We aren't voting tonight. I'm passing away around a letter to an editor that Mr. Modri actually wrote that I think will kind of help us put some things in perspective. When I came onto the council, and actually, the only person that's kind of left now is Don Preister that came onto the council about the time that I did, we didn't have pre-council meetings. And when we wanted to know information about what was going to go on at the evening's council meeting, if we had questions about bills, if we had needed more information, the way that it worked was we met in sets of three upstairs behind closed doors in the city administrator's office. And that was something that had happened for years, I don't, maybe decades, where they met in smaller groups, not a quorum. And if you learned something in one group and you shared it with the other group, that's how the information got passed back and forth. The concern that we had as a new council is that it, there was no transparency. And as Mr. Modri's letter so eloquently stated in the Bellevue Leader several weeks ago, "We work for the people of Bellevue." And when you don't create transparency, then you don't do justice to the position that you serve as a public servant. And so, we worked really hard to try and figure out, how can we share information that we discuss prior to council that pertains to the things that we might discuss prior to council? How can we do that in a public forum? How can we not be secretive? Because there's been a lot of things that have happened in the history of Bellevue that have been done in a secretive fashion that have been detrimental to Bellevue, a lot of good old boys type things. And then the other thing that we were really trying to push is that ultimately in the City of Bellevue, your legislative body is your city council. There had been policy that had been changed by mayors, no offense to our mayor, it's not out of disrespect that I say this, but there had been policy that had been changed and affected by our mayors, and in Bellevue, the mayor is not the legislative body, it is your council. And so after much discussion, which you saw in the attachments, we thought the best way to do it was through a pre-council meeting. And ultimately, we went with Mondays because we thought that a pre-council meeting would work because, first of all, the staff is here on a Monday afternoon, not requiring the staff to stay later after a meeting or before a meeting past the time that they're allotted during the day. It created greater transparency. If we discuss an issue that we have concerns about, that we want to ask, like for instance, when we talked about the pools today during pre-council, we can ask the question, it's televised, it's on YouTube, people can kind of understand why we're voting for something at night. They see how we build up to it, they see the information. And if we need information, we can ask that staff person, hey, we need this information and this is why. And so it isn't just somebody tuning in at night to see us vote on something or to have us ask questions, and they don't know where those questions come from. It educates our community better because they kind of see how we build up to that. And it also, when we decide whether we make any changes to this policy, the one thing that I want to caution everybody about is that we don't make any changes based on our personal preferences. When we decide to change this policy, and I'm not saying I'm for or against because I, I don't like giving up my afternoons either, but I want to remind you, you look at the Omaha City Council, they meet once a week at 2:00 PM in the afternoon every single week. I look at today, we were in pre-council and executive session from 1:30 to 5:40, I believe. You tack that extra time on to our average council meeting, which is usually around two hours, tonight being the exception because we want to get out of here, and we'll potentially be here till eleven o'clock or midnight. So I have people saying, well, there's people that won't run for city council if you have pre-council meetings. Well, there's people that won't run for city council if you're meeting till midnight. Take out your personal preferences, think about your citizens, think about transparency, think about what's truly best, not just for yourself, but what's about good policy, what truly brings about the best discussion as we move forward and we decide if indeed we are going to change this, as we decide what we're going to do. So, that's, that's all I'm asking. It's really easy to say, okay, we don't want to mute for pre-council anymore. I know it's a pain, I agree. I'm one of the council people that changed it. But again, I don't think the solution is meeting behind closed doors either. And I don't know if the solution is tacking it on to a nighttime meeting either. There's pros and cons all the way around, but the one thing I do feel really confident in is that we can't take steps back when it comes to transparency. And we can't take steps back when it comes to informing our citizens. And I think that we've come a long ways. You know, I've heard mayor candidates and other candidates say, oh, I'm going to eliminate pre-council and I'm going to, well, whatever. We're the legislative body, it's our job to set good policy, and the good policy should be based on something that has longevity and what's best for our citizens and what's best for councils to come in the future. And whatever we do, whatever we decide to do, whether we change it, we don't change it, let's make sure that we do it not for our personal preferences, but for whatever is for the greater good. That's all I ask. And so as we move forward to decide what we're going to do, because I know we have a lot of strong personalities now on the council, let's make sure that it's not just for our personal preference, but again, that's for the overall greater good for whoever comes after us. And that's all I have to say.
Discussion questions. Concerns? Mr. Cook. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I guess that from my last twenty-eight years on the Bellevue Board of Education, we met once a month. The meetings did go late sometimes, but also what we found that in those, that particular situation, if we had an individual member of the board that really had a question, whether it be Public Works or maybe with the attorney or with, say, it could be the police chief, those individuals at any time could pick up the phone and call them and say, here's my concern. And many times, those questions are answered right there. I think as far as transparency, the amount of attendance that I see at a pre-council meeting is very, very light. The attendance that's at the regular meeting is very, very strong. I also do believe that it does, and it does hurt, I think, for young people or people that have really full-time jobs to want to run for this office when they have to take two afternoons off, two afternoons off a month, and then also addition in the evening. I just feel that it's a way that I, it's almost a repeat. A lot of the stuff is a repeat that we did this afternoon, we're repeating it again. And I think if those folks, we can ask the questions right here while everybody's here. So, I mean, that's kind of my feeling. I didn't run that on a campaign or whatever, but I, I just, you know, personally feel that way, but I also don't think that it's really going to hurt the public interest as far as transparency. I don't know about the meeting behind closed door thing going on, but maybe that was something that happened before, but, you know, I guess that's my feeling.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in concurrence with John on this. The, the meetings that took place that Carol references in my twenty-five years of working here were only about four or five years of the time. Most of the, most of the councils held business every evening two times a month, and they did exactly what John says. They talked to the staff, they talked amongst the council. And how and why it got to the point that Carol was put in a position to go to a pre-council meeting, which I don't disagree with her on that, I think you need to be transparent for the public. Those situations, I don't think are going to transpire again. We can, we all communicate well, we all work together well. And I think in the position of, of what's best for the city, as John said, there's nobody here generally for a pre-council meeting. And if we do our business carefully and we do our research and we read our material before the meetings, the meetings won't run till eleven o'clock. At least they shouldn't.
Councilwoman Blood.
I just want to point out that in my primary, after the pre-council meetings were installed or instilled, that I think I had seven people in my primary. And I think prior to pre-council meetings, if you go prior to 2008, how many people were in primaries? Maybe two. But I don't think it really does affect the races in a negative fashion, I mean, logically speaking. Again, so, numbers don't lie. So I think, again, we go back to our personal preferences. You know, I am willing to bend and willing to change. And when we went to pre-council, if you look at our notes, we said that if it didn't work, and it did work, and that's why we stuck with it, that we'd be willing to go back to something else or try something else. Now, I think that if we do go back to eliminating pre-council, that the one thing you have to understand is that if we have council, staff people here, we may end up having to talk about overtime, and that you, that you guys understand that unless they're salaried, do you, and that you guys put in the minutes that you might be willing to, again, change if it doesn't work, in case you are here till eleven o'clock or midnight. Because what are you going to do about executive sessions? That's been the nice thing about pre-council meetings, is that when we have an executive session, like today, when we're here till 5:40, that's a long day. And there's people who get up at 5:00 AM or 4:00 AM, like Councilwoman Cook, who if they are here until midnight. So, again, devil's advocate, you can look, I'm being devil's advocate on purpose. I'm saying, look at it all the way around, not just for ourselves. And for me, I'm happy to do whatever the quorum wants to do, but just make sure that when we go to set the policy, that you look at it from both sides. And I'm not arguing in any fashion, I'm just saying, make sure we're looking at it from all sides.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to have Skype so I can participate, but I also particularly appreciate this particular discussion. I'm open to making changes. I just think we need to do it as deliberatively as we can. To just either have pre-council or not have it at all, I don't think is the best approach. We do have scheduling issues, and no matter who serves as a citizen representative of council, there are going to be conflicts for us individually, and there are going to be conflicts for any potential new candidates. So I agree with Councilwoman Blood that we do need to do this for the best interest of the majority that we can come up with. I recognize that everybody, or most likely everybody, is going to have to get up the next morning and go to work. I think that's a factor. I think we, unlike Omaha, who meets at two o'clock in the afternoon and makes it more difficult for the public, I think it is good that we meet in the evening. But between that evening meeting and getting questions answered, yes, we can email or make a phone call or get that information. But other council members may have that same question and don't get it answered then unless it's somehow shared. And the public may also have some of those same questions. To give staff some additional time if they need it to research, to have staff there at a time when they're all ready on the clock essentially and during their workday, I think makes sense. So there are pluses and minuses to having the pre-council and to doing it in the evening. If we do it in the evening, we're also going to ask more businesses and more of the people who give testimony and presentations to us at the pre-council to also give up that time and come in the evening. My point being is, no schedule is perfect, and I think we need to think about this before making any changes and do it in a deliberative way, however we choose and see, and in the best interest of the public. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Hanson.
I guess that when you referred, Miss Blood, to executive sessions, and I know that, you know, of course, we had those with the school board also. One of the things that tried not to do is have too many executive sessions, because when you looked at today's pre-council meeting, we probably had just a very short period of time with open to the public, and then the executive session lasted almost two and a half hours. There you go with transparency. So the people out there saying, okay, what, what's going on in the executive session? So I guess one of the things I would like to encourage is have very few executive sessions or very narrow topics and go from there. But I mean, you look at that, and that's what I consider when you start not having transparency, because they don't know what's going on.
Thank you. Councilwoman Blood.
I'm in complete agreement with you, and that is one of the reasons we started putting down exactly why we go into executive session. And you will not get in an argument with me on that. I think we have too many executive sessions. I know that administration does that to keep the council in the loop, but I think that that's something that we need to be working towards. We've gone from not getting enough information to almost getting too much information, and I think we need to find some, somewhere in the middle. Because frankly, I'd like to go home and see my husband, and I've not seen him for a very long time. We've been here since, yeah, one o'clock, so.
Mr. Brilowitz.
Yeah, obviously, both the various council members make some very good points. The thing that I would want to interject from an administrative standpoint and a staff standpoint, though, that we are a large city, and we have a lot of issues that come before us. Look at the length of our agendas. To really do business effectively, we need to have the time to be able to have discussion in order, from a staff standpoint, when questions do come up, to be able to be prepared, get you information, because ultimately, our role is to allow you to be good decision-makers. If you alter the pre-council, and believe me, it's a long day for all of us, staff included, it's, but my concern is, you know, call it a pre-council, call it a work session, folks, but we need time to be able to, to sit down via the council with staff where you can go through some issues, some are non-issues, some are very clear, and they require very low discussion or research. But even today, as we discussed, a number of issues with dealing with swimming pools and dealing with a lot of the other things, there's a lot of information that needs to be provided, which will become potentially very difficult to do it in just one evening meeting, twice a week, twice a month. And my concern is, it may end up causing things to be delayed for decisions to be made because we haven't had time to prepare the information for you, to really go through and determine, are there some issues that need further research before you can act? And so, again, it's a long day. My staff have a lot of important things to do. But my concern is, if we don't have some venue or mechanism in which to have a work session, to some degree, it's going to potentially undermine your ability to make good decisions. It's going to make it very difficult for staff to be responsive to you and get you the information you need to make good decisions. So from an administrative and staff standpoint, that would be my only concern. Like I said, I see the pros and cons on that, but that would be something that, if changes are made, then we do need to have, come up with some mechanism process in which, though, we can address the types of things that I would be concerned with.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. I think everybody's bringing up good points, and it is a tough decision. But for me, what it comes down to is, you know, you look at all the committees that we have otherwise with the city, and they're all being held on a Thursday night or whatever. And to me, I think the majority of the people... And to me, I think the majority of the people, if they're going to volunteer in a community or provide service in the community, it generally is going to be in the evenings or weekends. And I, you know, in the career that I had, working weekends and working nights and stuff, it prevented me from maybe participating in some volunteer work or to run for an office. But I just think that I agree that our executive sessions have to be less, and they have to be shorter, and I hope we can get to that point. But I just think it provides a better opportunity, not for people, not only for people to run for this office, but also for people to come out and sit and watch what's going on. A couple of things that I would suggest, that I'm asking Dan, is, you know, we're probably going to be calling some of the directors more often and ask for clarity, and what are we trying to do here? And maybe to get a better understanding. So, maybe instead of sitting at a pre-council meeting, we'll try to run them down on their phone. And that's going to take up some time. These cover sheets that we use on our agenda items, I think there could be more information there. I think they could be maybe redone, provide bigger boxes for whoever's filling them out, the directors or whatever, to add more information in there, and maybe give us some more clarity and understanding of an issue. And, you know, we really ask a lot for the staff to be here at 1:30 and then come back at 6:00. And I'm sure that they have things that they want to address in their offices and with their personnel that work for them. So, I'm willing to make a change and see how it works. I'll never close the door to anything. But I think there are some things internally we could do better to maybe assist us at these meetings. And then let's just see how, maybe a different change in time of these meetings, see how that would go for a while. Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? Mr. Sullivan.
Just want to clarify a little bit. Prior to pre-council meeting and prior to us dropping from 10 council members to six, there would be an open session generally that Monday afternoon in the administrator's office for up to five council members that could show up. Generally speaking, there were two or three. Completely permissible up to five to go over agenda items. Some people need more specific information than others. When the council dropped down from 10 to six, it was apparent that there was likely that more than three wanted to kind of have that pre-briefing. In doing so, we were running a file of the Open Meetings Act, and that's where we got to the pre-council meeting. So, in a sense that anything was contrived or done behind closed doors, those were completely permissive briefing meetings during those periods.
Councilwoman Blood.
I wasn't trying to imply otherwise. It was our, for us, it was that we weren't sharing information with the other half of the council. And when we started talking about issues, we felt like we weren't being transparent. So, it was more of our personal impression, as opposed to... I didn't want to imply otherwise. I'm sorry.
No, I'm not saying you were. I'm just saying that as everybody's skeptical generally
No, I hear.
of government and what's going on. I just wanted to make that abundantly clear.
Mr. Motry.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Wonder if it would be helpful to get the, some public input on this issue? You know, we said there aren't a lot of people that come to the pre-council meeting. But do people watch pre-council meetings, you know, on TV? And do you get anything out of it? Is it helpful? Is it okay if I move?
Would you like to put that in motion?
Move to open it up for a public comment.
We have a motion for Mr. Motry.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. I'm now open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time.
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. When I was in the City Council, we met, first it was two of us, Dave Sandburn and myself, meeting with S.P. Benson. Then, when Erickson got on, then the three of us would meet there. And I don't see a problem with going back the way it was, and for a couple of reasons. One, because of, I think there's more transparency. Sometimes when I was in the council, we had executive meetings where they did it on purpose, so when we were in the council meeting, then we couldn't talk about it to the public. And that's a no-no. We don't need executive meetings so we can hide stuff. So, I agree with John that less executive meetings are better. Also, it, when one council person wanted to raise, have to raises for their salary, one of the biggest selling points was that they were, it was an inducement to have younger people try out, try or to be on the City Council. And I think you mentioned that, somebody else mentioned that, or also that if you're going to have these meetings, then you're also, these younger people are more apt to have jobs where they can't get away. So, you're eliminating the opportunity of some of these young people, like one gentleman who comes up here and speaks a little bit in the last few months. He could be a candidate. And there's other ones that would probably be, might file for City Council. It's, I think that you're saying this is a big city and a lot of things. Well, I hate to say this, but even though Papillion is smaller, they don't do a, they don't do a pre-council meeting, and they get through with the meetings pretty quickly. One thing that I noticed in the pre-council meetings has done a lot is that certain council people will ask the Public Works Director, Mr. Roberts or Mr. Chuchek, they'll ask questions that they could have asked ahead of time. They didn't have to ask those questions there. So, that, if the council starts asking those questions to the directors ahead of time before the meeting, then you won't have to ask those questions during the meeting, and that will cut the meeting down also. So, there's a lot of reasons to go back to just not having the pre-council meeting. So, I'm certainly against it continuing the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Blood.
Mr. Frederick. Are you saying that the public doesn't deserve to hear us asking the directors questions, so they can hear the answers too?
Say what?
Well, you're saying that we shouldn't be asking directors questions to cut down on time? I'm being, so you don't think the public should hear those answers?
Well, a lot of those times, you're asking the questions just to ask the question, rather than trying to inform the public. And you, you know, if you ask that same question to Mr. Roberts or Ms. Chuchek ahead of time, that question, that would be solved. You wouldn't have to answer that, wouldn't have to answer that question. It's not a problem with the public not knowing. It's a problem of you guys doing your job and communicating and getting it done. Then if it's a problem, then it could be brought up. But in most cases, if you're going to be an efficient organization and run the city properly, you should have the communication, you should have the communication internally to get most of this stuff done. You don't have to make it so long all the time. And I just think it's a better time to have Police Chief and the rest of the gentlemen are here to be at their jobs, rather than being down here. I think this, I think it's just, I think basically, I think it's a waste of time.
You think...
That's my opinion.
I just want to clarify, because you're up here a lot talking about tax, how we spend your tax dollars and stuff. So, if Mr. Roberts tells me he wants to spend $3 million on a pool, you don't think I should be asking him in a public forum what that $3 million is for?
Don't you think that that could be on the agenda or in your agenda package that you find out? I mean, in other words...
But it isn't always in there, and that's why we have to clarify stuff like that. That's why we ask those questions. We don't do it because it's giggles and fun.
I don't see that, asking that often for that particular situation. Maybe I'm wrong about that, Mrs. Blood. But I think there's a lot of talk up here that can be reduced, and that will reduce the meetings. And you, and I think the pre-council meetings, I've been to many of the pre-council meetings for a long time. And I just think that all it is, is a chance for some of the people to bloviate and make themselves look good, and then go on. And most people don't watch the pre-council meetings. A lot of people don't even watch the regular meetings, much less the pre-council meetings. So, I just don't feel that having pre-council meetings is an advantage to anybody. And I think it really covers up, I think, is more, less transparency than if you just did it the regular way. Just do your jobs, communicate, and then get the business done.
Are there others that would like to speak on this item?
My name is Julie Garrett. I want to thank you all for being, stepping up and taking these jobs, because I know that I have no clue how hard and time-consuming this is. But we do, the whole city I'm speaking for, appreciate you representing us and doing the best you can for the city. But saying that, you have a massive responsibility. And the amount of time it takes is staggering. I have small idea of the amount of time individuals put in for public service. And it's just unbelievable. But it's your job to make our lives prosperous and our, the place we live, a good place to live. So, it's your jobs. Now, it's staggering, the amount of work that I know that you have to do. So, there's got to be some way to just put your hands together and streamline this stuff. I mean, knock out, everybody's got schedules, everybody's got jobs, everybody's got stuff to do. But there's got to be a way to cut down on the amount of time that you have to spend. And the transparency part of this, I've been thinking about this for a long time, and I need to get on the agenda to ask some more questions. But the bottom line is, when I'm working at night, I have three screens going all at one time, and I don't have an extra one over here to be watching YouTube. But I do have on the TV set, and I'm listening to everything that goes on. And I think it's underutilized. I think both young people who are at home and older people who are at home, either, you know, working, new business especially. I think if it was on there, and with a little bit of a more clear explanation as to what this is, because like reading the minutes, there's a couple of things in here that I just don't know really what was talked about. I missed the last meeting. I think it would help a lot, and I think it would inform the public. I think it would make it more transparent. I think you would get a lot of questions and a lot more interaction by email, especially, and possibly by phone calls, that would make things a lot easier and make a lot of people happier. And it would just make things a lot more transparent and a lot more people happy. And maybe it'll pinpoint little things here and there that wouldn't turn into a big deal, but take up a lot of your time and could turn into a big deal. So, like I said, the public access, I think, is a really good tool that you have to inform the public, that is really being underutilized. So, thank you again.
Are there others? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. This was discussion only? Is there any further discussion on item number 12? M.
I just have, nope. Yeah, he's waving.
Mr. Skype, Mr. Preister.
Yes, Mr. Don Skype Preister. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to answer a little bit of Mr. Motry's question and perhaps others, that I hear regularly from, and I will grant you, most of them are my age or older, but people all the time religiously watch our City Council meetings. And the City Council meetings run first with the pre-council meeting and then into the council meeting. And those people tell me what they like, they tell me what they disliked, and what their opinions were of what we have done. And I think one of the best things we do is broadcast our City Council meetings and also now have them available through Facebook, so people can tune in at their own time or at a scheduled time. So, I believe people pay attention to both meetings. I think giving information in that public forum is important. And the vast majority of people never come to a council meeting. So, there aren't a lot of people at pre-council, but there really aren't very many people. Given that we're a population of 52,000, and we get maybe five to 20 people at a meeting, it's a pretty small percentage. So, I think people are watching. I think when they have concerns, they get ahold of us individually. They watch those meetings. Also, in terms of people's schedule, I think the vast majority of us still do work regular day shift. But there are more and more people who work nights. We have one council person who just left, who was working all odd hours. There are a lot of people like that. So, there are many variables. I think this is deliberative. It's a good process that we're having the discussion. And I think we also heard what the city administrator said. I think if we take all the concerns, as well as the pluses, I think we put those together, and then we resolve what will be in the best interest of the public. I don't think we should just eliminate pre-council meeting without some replacement or without some attention giving. How else we function as a council, doing the people's business? So, my word is not, do we do it or do we not do it? Whatever we do, we do deliberatively, we do together, and in the best interest of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Preister. Mr. Sullivan.
Just wanted to say, it seems like we've got differing opinions on both sides of this, and that's kind of why we brought it up for discussion. I don't know that I have any great direction, whether I should be drafting an ordinance or not, or whether I draft an ordinance. You guys can vote on it, or what you'd like me to proceed with.
Councilwoman Blood.
I think because we do have such good communication that we can start chatting amongst ourselves, not in a full quorum, because we wouldn't want to break the rules, and that we'll be able to come to terms with something that we can present as a council. Wouldn't you be in agreement?
I'm in complete agreement with that, Carol.
I don't think we're going to do anything with a knee-jerk reaction. I think we're going to be contemplative about it. I think it would be beneficial to wait until Councilman Preister can come back and vote when we're ready. But I don't think we're going to have anything before the beginning of February, anyway.
When are you coming back, Mr. Skype?
He'll be back for the February meeting. So, all good discussion? Any other further discussion? See none? And I have no doubt we'll do the right thing. Thank you. Takes us to item number 13, Public Requests to Be Heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Number 35 Regarding Principles of Conduct and Decorum, which states, "Any statement made during the council meeting by the mayor, members of the City Council, city officials and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals, regardless whether the individual so attacks is an elected official, a city official, or an employee or a member of the general public." And Section Code Dash 2-68 regarding the manner of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. First of all, I hope everybody had a happy holiday, and hopefully, everybody remembered what Christmas is all about. I do think, I think I speak for the majority of people in residence of Bellevue. And I want to thank the council people who voted for free speech at the last meeting. And it was about free speech. So, I think that hopefully, that will continue this way. And the people who want to get up here and speak about anything can. All you have, two weeks to respond to anybody who gets up there to speak. Now, there are people in this room right now, both elected and appointed officials, who try to label me as a negative person for my suggestions to improve the city. Sometimes they did it indirectly here at the City Council meetings, and other times they did it directly in the newspapers. I'm just going to give you some of the things real shortly, what I've talked about, and you can, the pub, and you can consider, the people who watch this can see if this is a negative thing or not. One of the things I've talked about in the past was having a balance sheet. Now, I'm a University of Minnesota grad with a degree in business, and I know the difference between a balance sheet and a monthly financial statement. They're not the same. And it's time we start doing a monthly balance sheet. I talked about the fire department, the chief asking to have the city collect $540,000. I asked numerous times, they, I mean, you can play dumb, I didn't know what I was talking about. And finally, I got a somewhat of an answer of a percentage. I like to know what the exact figure was, dollar-wise, that you collected. I know it was less than 10%, because that was stated. Another thing I talked about was the, why are we selling the land or have it for sale, where the library's going to go? I mean, in other words, the library committee has talked about it twice to you. I mean, in other words, the library committee has talked about it twice to you people as far as where they want to have it, on 36th and near the church right there. I've talked about the state of Nebraska doing the audit this year, at no extra cost to the city. All you do is move up the contract for your auditor, one more year up, and you still have five years. So, I've talked, and I've talked about a lot of things, but one thing I think that I can't quite understand is that, is that the library is still closed, and sometimes it's said that we don't have any money, other times then something comes up, we have the money, we don't have the money. I think we should have enough, enough money to keep the library open on Sunday, and I think we have enough money in the community fund to start the, start the second splash pad in Everett Park. I would, I know there's a game on coming up, so I'm going to not talk any longer. All I can ask is just look at my website, chuckfrederick.com, and look at it for the next two or three months, and you'll see some other suggestions I have too. Thank you very much.
Are there others? See none, I'll close the public request to be heard. Item number 14, adjournment, Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to adjourn.
A second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. And the upcoming events, January 15th, Thursday, strategic planning meeting at 8:30, fire training site, 3100 Cornhusker Road. January 19th, Monday, city offices closed for Martin Luther King Day. January 26th, Monday, Board of Equalization meeting at 5:45, followed by 6:00 council meeting. Thank you, and have a good night.